Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach's workshop meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, at 3:30 PM. Please call the roll.
Mr. Frankel.
President.
Mr. Boylston.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
President.
Mayor Petolia.
Here. And before we start with the workshop meeting, we have some comments that the city manager would like to make on the front end. So I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon, once again. I would like to offer a brief clarification regarding the old-school square selection process. I do so simply because the office of the city manager and others had been experiencing a number of inquiries relative to the process and how it's structured. As I attempted to explain fairly well via the October 15, 2021 City Commission Information Letter, the process involves an invitation to negotiate, which offers a great deal of great deal more flexibility and creativity than does the traditional request-for-proposal process or hard-and-fast bid process, per se. Thus, there is an element of fluidity associated with this process because, of course, the fact that we have the opportunity to engage in a negotiation process, as noted, provides a avenue for creativity, flexibility, to have external experts to share with the city what can be accomplished in terms of possibilities with respect to proposals and collaborations to achieve an expanded level of cultural and artistic activities, entertainment, et cetera. So I offer that because we are also in the midst of a cone of silence associated with this consideration, and therefore, because of the uniqueness of the invitation-to-negotiate process, we are, A, not at liberty to speak or respond to individuals who may have questions or concerns in this regard, and also, B, the fact is we are relying on external experts to help evaluate considerations that will ultimately become available for mayor and city commission review and consideration. So for that reason, ladies and gentlemen, I ask for understanding and awareness, as noted, simply because our interest is to not ignore or dismiss any questions or concerns that might exist in this regard. It's just that we are in the guise of the cone of silence, and we need to operate accordingly. Again, we are looking forward to some solid recommendations to be brought forth as a result of the invitation-to-negotiate process for which we are currently involved.
Can I ask a question, just since you're on this? When is that date that we will have the presentation, or the end of the bidding and the choosing?
We anticipate offering considerations for your review and consideration early in the new year.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing done, thank you very much for that. So we'll move on to the workshop item number one, which is our Director of Education, and this is the educational workshop information. Janet Meeks.
Thank you very much in allowing me to come speak to you today on education. So today is a workshop about our follow-up to the goal-setting session that you had over the summer in June or July, I believe it was, and the final report from that goal-setting session under policies and programs under youth and education. The major action steps were for me to conduct a needs assessment, to provide you with a proposed service plan, determine funding needs, and then present back to you, which is what I'm doing today. So the first couple of slides that I am going to go to is a deep dive into the data for the needs assessment. And so I wanted to qualify that all of my data was taken either from Palm Beach County School District's website, talking to their staff, or from the Florida Department of Education websites. So that's where the data was being taken from. So when we look at enrollment, over the past six years, we've actually had a 21% decline in our enrollment. At one point in time, we had around 8,500 students, and we're down to about 6,500 students. I wanted just to step back for one quick second. I probably should give you a snapshot that I'm talking today about our eight public schools. That would be the elementary, middle, and high schools. We currently have about 6,500 students that are enrolled in our schools. Of that, about 4,000 are actually residents of the city of Delray Beach, and of that, about 50% live in the CRA district. And 90% of those students are on the Free and Reduced Lunch program. So that kind of gives you an overview of the data that we're talking about today. Then, looking at the district's five-year enrollment projections, we're going to have slight growth, but Village Academy, Pine Grove, and Carver Middle School, there's no growth that's projected for those particular schools. When we go into, on the decline as well, 10% occurred over the past three years due to COVID, so that kind of sped up the 21% decline. When it comes to learning loss, 11.2% of our children in third grade are below the state and county average. So our reading scores are around 42%, and the state is 54% for the state and the county. When it comes to graduation at Atlantic High School, we do pretty good in this arena. We add 96.8% of the students graduating, which is actually 6% higher than the state and county. However, when you look underneath that statistics, 54% of the kids are reading on grade level, which is about the same with the state and the county, but we're only at 22% proficient at math, which is 50% lower than the state and the county. When we get to college readiness scores, and I will qualify that as done state by state, so we can't really do an analysis between the states because they determine their own college readiness scores. But it is defined for the state of Florida, it's a child-taking, either an AP class, IB dual enrollment, or industry certification that makes them college or career-ready. So last year, there was about 538 students that actually graduated from Atlantic High School. However, that means that 222 students were not ready for career or college. So as we move forward, now that we have a new Economic Development Director, and we start to align education with economic development and high-paying jobs and livable wages, I did take this out of the Economic Development slide deck that was presented to you in September. And if you can see, our three top industry sectors are healthcare, retail trade, accommodations, and food service. And if you look to the column to the right, there's only one, the healthcare is the only trade we have that pays a livable wage for one adult. Otherwise, when you add a child to the mix, none of those actually pay a living wage. And I can tell you that some of my statistics show that almost way over 90% of the jobs that require high wages do require some sort of post-secondary education or certification. Also, looking at education, this is a slide deck from that same presentation, and the five pillars that you discussed, and I pulled out the ones that were particularly involved with education. So one of the things we were going to look at is leverage existing apprenticeship and vocational programs. I'm really not aware of any that are currently happening here within our city. The second item was explore industry-specific training programming. I really don't know this at this time. I don't know of any hard, like, in-class programs, but people could be doing it online. In fact, I do believe last night at Village Academy, they were talking about Adobe and Microsoft, some training that was going on. With respect to youth entrepreneurial initiative business plan, competition, and special events, we do know that our nonprofits do provide these, but they're sporadic with our nonprofits, and there really aren't any vetted outcomes. Therefore, you can't replicate them, or they're not really scalable. And the last bullet here was review of K-12 challenges and opportunities, which has really been completed as part of this needs assessment. So what is the data telling us? I'm a data person, so I like to look at the data to tell us where we need to go. So based on what it's telling us, we do need to address our under-enrolled, underperforming, and physically deteriorating K-12 schools. We do need to address COVID learning loss suffered by students through innovative programming. We can tell that with the third-grade reading and most of all of our math and reading scores. We do need to address the student gaps in career and college readiness through innovative programming, and address the need for high-quality youth and adult career and technical workforce education. So those are the needs that I would be presenting as part of that overall major action step that I was to come back and tell you about. So what is the plan? I don't actually have the plan in place at this point in time, but as many of you know, in 1994, we did have a binding agreement with Palm Beach County School District that really outlined what the city was going to do and what the school district was going to do, and who would be responsible for what. So I would be suggesting that we move back into that process of getting that written out in some sort of form, which will address the four things that were on the previous slide, particularly, again, with the under-enrolled and underperforming schools. And as you know, we have a lot of under-just-resourced kids here, and it's not about being equal but equitable. And of course, our students need a little bit more than our counterparts that are to the south or to the northwest of us. So again, these will, some of the new things that we have also learned since the last time, I think it was before you here, back in, I think it was like in May, the pandemic has really exposed a lot of issues that we're having in our community, which is we have to do, provide more than the food and accommodation tracks for our kids. We also have an Economic Development Director that has some new data that we can align some of our programming pieces with. And there is a lot of money that can support some educational programs moving forward because of the pandemic. So part of my plan also today is to talk about the funding, and as you generously provided me, $93,000 in my budget. So part of my presentation today is just validating today that I'm on the right track for what I should be spending in this fiscal year. There is somewhat of an urgency going on here because the school district's school year, or their fiscal window is from July to June, and ours is October to September, therefore, almost half the school year is over. So out of the budget, what I'd really like to spend my money on is I'm working on identifying a workforce, summer-paid internship program for junior seniors in Delray Beach for career exploration and readiness program. This is no different than what we did in 2012 with the Campaign for Grade Level Reading. We'd like to come up with a signature program that becomes Delray Beach's youth signature program to help our students get, having, you know, get on the right path for high-wage, high-paying jobs. There is this lack of career exploration. This would be something that I would really like to do and move it forward for the next couple of years so that we can track some of our success on that particular program. Another segment of my budget, a small portion, I'd like to go to learning loss. We do know that we've heard a lot from a lot of different educational people that we need, kids need just more time in school with after-school tutorials. So I would particularly like to spend $20,000 of my budget to help support the after-school tutorials at Plomosa School of the Arts in Orchard View that would also layer in with the work that Roots and Wings is doing. And the reason why I chose those particular schools is because we actually are, next month, I'll have contracts for you to approve with the Achievement Center, which we have $143,000 in our budget, and those services go to Village Academy and Pine Grove. So that way, we'd be helping supporting all four of our Title I schools within our community. I've also added about $10,000 to either get a consultant or with some help with professional services. We try to develop that workforce development program for the summer program. And then the last little bit of funding would be to continue to support our grade-level reading initiatives, which is books, events, and Delray Reads Day. So all of that would add up to about $93,000. So that is my presentation. And I do have, I can hand to you, I do have a full report, which I can give you, which has all the data information, that's a deep dive that you can look at at your leisure, specifically for the data collection portion.
Well, thank you so much, Janet. To the commission for any questions or concerns.
Did that very well. Look at that. The buzzer's just going off.
I got a question.
Sure.
Meeks, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. When I was on the Palm Beach County Tourist Development Council, I noted that county resources and county dollars went to other cities, particularly north of us. Have there been any information or data that you've discovered to see where the county's sending their educational dollars, whether it's a similar situation or not?
I do not, but I can find that out and get back to you on that one.
Just curious.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks again for the presentation.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you very much, Janet, for this wonderful presentation. I'll look to read it and understand it. I know $93,000 isn't a lot of money, but I have a different perspective. I don't think we hold our school district accountable, and as much as we try, that's not our lane. I'd like to see the city stay in our own lane a lot more than we do. I don't know that the after-school tutorial programs, I guess the ones that are at our parks, at the Pompeii Park, and was at the Community Center, is that correct? Is that where our children, or are these at the schools that you mentioned? And by the way, I only heard Plomosa, Achievement Center, and what were the other two?
The money that I was going to support for after-school tutorials to enhance it would be at Plomosa School of the Arts in Orchard View, because we also, Achievement Center provides the after-school tutorials at Village Academy and Pine Grove. And the reason why the tutorials would be at the schools is because they would be done through certified teachers, and they would know the reading levels that the children are at, so they would just transition directly from their after, from school into the after-school program.
About how many students per school?
Um.
Round park, if you will.
Probably around 40 to 60 students. So we would be looking at the kindergarten to third grade for the tutorials.
Per school?
Per school. And then it wouldn't just be for literacy, but also math.
Do you know if the county has made provisions in any way, the state level? Are we supplementing? Are we adding? Or is this a special program that only the city of Delray is investing in? Or are we partnering? I'm just a little concerned that, I know people are going to say I'm not caring about the kids. I do care about the kids. We instituted a half-penny tax, and it appears that no matter what we do, those who are responsible just aren't doing it. And I would hope that we would have a little bit more accountability in what's going on with all that money that they get. I don't hear that, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. I just would like to have a little bit more buy-in from the county and the school district. I was sold on the gambling money going towards our schools years ago. Where's all that money? It just bothers me to know in that money keeps pouring into these places that are supposed to be taking care of our children. We only have a small amount, $93,000, and this is what we need to do with it, and it's just a drop in the bucket. I don't see that it's going to make a lot of difference. I would pray it would, but I hope someone could prove me wrong. And you did this back in 2012, you said?
Well, we had the Campaign for Grade Level Reading, which we were able to do longitudinal studies that did show that we could make progress in the third-grade reading. The pandemic, there are some dollars, esker dollars are called, that come down from the state that are for school tutorials. I have not seen that break down exactly from the school district, or how many schools, the exact amounts given to the schools.
Because they did get a.
They do.
A piece of money from the federal government. I just.
As you know, though, it just seems like there's never quite enough. And again, the reason why I was picking these particular schools is because also Knights of Protheris is providing an extended day at those particular two schools, so I'd like to concentrate all of our money into the programs or schools that I think would get the best benefit with the best results versus taking it in smaller portions and just giving 1,000 here, 1,500 there. I don't think that would make an impact.
Right.
But we can come back with you as we, to get results.
I'd like to be more convinced that this is a good use of the expenditure of our money at those particular programs. I'm not saying it's not, I'm just not convinced. I also know that the Achievement Center spent about $500,000 on a purchase recently, and I know that we don't direct monies that these nonprofits spend, but I would dearly have loved to see them use this $500,000 in that aspect. We'd have no control over it, so I just question a lot of things and choices made by these organizations, not the schools themselves. I know they're strapped. We don't pay our teachers enough, so it's a problem. $93,000, drop in the bucket. I just know that the need is greater, and just don't see that the people who are responsible for it are really doing the job, obviously, because the numbers wouldn't be reflected as they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Boylston?
So I look at this from a different perspective. $93,000 is almost $93,000 more than we've ever allocated.
Yes.
So I'm really excited to see what this can generate in our community. And I've said this before from the dais, FDOT is responsible for street projects in our city, but then we put additional funds towards those projects to enhance them even further. We have public transportation, we have Palm Tran. We spend additional dollars, right, for freebie, right, to enhance our public transportation. So to enhance the support for our children, or programs for our children, to make sure that they can be, and you know, one of the hottest topics right now is career readiness, so not only affecting, you know, the lives of our residents, our youngest residents, the ones with the tiniest voices, but also impacting the economic development, the future of our city, our county, our state, I think is incredibly important. It is our responsibility. I'm excited to, I'm excited looking at this, and I know you gave, we had a discussion about it when you started going into the data, so I had a little bit of a preview, but to really see it tonight, that you've allowed the data and the time that we're in right now to drive the strategy and the solutions that you're putting forward. I mean, I don't know if you were surprised, but to put that much of your budget towards the older grades in that workforce, which is absolutely needed right now. Now, hopefully, a year from now, just over a year, we got an update last night from Dr. Deborah Robinson, we're going to have a new Delray Full Service Center opening. And right out of the gate, that brand-new 20,000-square-foot building is not going to be able to hold the need. They're already going to be bringing in, what did they refer to them as?
Concrete.
Portables, but.
Concreteables.
Concreteables, right? Already, right, with a brand-new building. That's how big, that's how big the need is. And looking at those numbers from the last graduating class, and knowing that they're probably not going to be much better here, we owe it. We owe it to those young adults, and you've identified that. And so to jump in on that need this year with $93,000 and go after that this summer and try to get these young adults ready, career-ready, or college-ready, I'm just really impressed the way you used that data.
Thank you.
To put this strategy together. And of course, ensuring that, we also have some dollars for that extended stay. Right? And I was talking to Dr. Deborah Robinson, and actually, Ms. Erica Whitfield today, who they need all the help they can get, right? The teachers need all the help they can get, the principals need all the help they can get. There's actually a study that just came out that our teachers and principals, the exhaustion rate that they're usually at at the end of the year, they've hit it right now, this month. They got a lot more ways to go. So they're looking for our help, and one of the ways they're looking is that extended stay, that ability for us to somehow fund or partner with nonprofits or other partners in the community so that the children can stay at school longer and get the extended help that they need so that they can start catching up. So to see that part of our strategy as well, I think is fantastic. So I appreciate you, with the deep dive, taking the time, going through the data, and putting forward these solutions, and I know our community will as well. So thank you, Ms. Meeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I wanted to say that I hear all three of my colleagues up here, and I agree with each one in the different positions that they've brought forward, because I think that the vice mayor has a very, she definitely has some legitimate concerns, and also, we are moving forward with, you know, this money being invested into, as Commissioner Boylston explained, into an area that I think you found a need, and I think that that's the right thing to do at this point. My concern is that, you know, what we're doing here, and what I'm seeing, is that we're falling behind. We're not keeping up, and we're not going forward. I feel as though we're sliding back a little bit, not because of anything that you are doing, to the contrary, but because of the fact that we just don't seem to have the resources to help the kids in Delray Beach that, as you suggest, and I agree with, may need more resources than, you know, a child that's going to another school in another area that's affluent. They may not need as much, but I think that when I start to hear about how low enroll, what their low enrollment is in some of these schools, that is scary, because I know enrollment equals dollars to that school. And when you don't have the dollars to that school, you cannot fund that school or program that school to the level that some of these schools that are busting at the seams and have an excess amount of money, because the dollars follow the child, you know, in the program, in the school district. So I think that there needs to be, at some point, a conversation had with the school district on exactly what it is that we are dealing with here, that is different circumstances than a Boca Raton or some of the other areas that don't seem, they're busting at the seams. We're in the absolute opposite, which is really starving our schools and therefore our students. So that's one of the things that I have noticed and am very concerned about, because that is going to hit us long-term. If we don't get these kids in the, you know, by third grade at a proficient level of reading, we can pretty much kiss that goodbye. We know that. We know that's why we try so hard in Delray Beach. That's why we have this right up here, this, uh, great plaque above my head that talks about the All-American City. I know a lot of people do not understand, they think that it's because we're, you know, you know, an All-American City, but that came because of education, um, um, you know, um, initiatives that we took and then went and got that because of that, uh, because of those initiatives that we took. So, you know, one of the things that we have always had, and this is where I may, I don't disagree with, uh, the vice mayor, but I want to make sure that you're aware of, and I know you are, but we've always had a partnership with the school district. And that has actually made, um, made us, uh, stronger as, as, in, in advocating for our students, because if we didn't have that partnership in the past, we would not be able to advocate for the school, uh, the children in our schools. And I, I think that that partnership is kind of somewhat, um, maybe it's not as strong as it used to be. And, and part of that is our doing. When we basically went through and did that, um, Sharing for Excellence in schools, the plan that we had, we never really did update it. And I know that you, you took the time to come and ask the city, um, years back, could we do this? And I don't think the city commission was, you know, in, in that spirit at that point in time. But I think that, you know, with things happening with COVID, watching the slide happen even more, understanding that we've got enrollment down everywhere, not being able to even find some of the students any longer as to who used to go to school, we don't even have act, we don't know where they are. It is the time for us to really focus on that. So my first ask of the commission is, I, I think we need to update it. I think it's very important that we move forward on getting an update so that we have a goal in mind as a city. Without having that plan, we're, we're just like a, you know, a, a ship without a rudder out in the middle of the sea. It's just wherever the wind blows us. So if we have an absolute plan of where we're taking ourselves, that's the first step. And then we need to reconnect with our, um, you know, leaders in, 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 um, at, uh, at the school board, um, so they can understand what we're trying to do. Because again, they're not here, you know, into everything that's happening. And they don't understand necessarily, they, I'm sure they know some of these, the data, they've got it in front of them, but they don't really understand maybe what is the reasons for the differences that, that are taking place, where we're, you know, right here tapped in and we can maybe help them to understand and also what our real needs are. Um, and they're gonna be different from, you know, other municipalities, so we can't be treated the same way. I mean, we just can't. Um, so that's the first step. The second thing, I, I did have some questions, um, with respect to the college or career readiness that you were talking about, that we didn't have as great a, um, percentage as some of the neighboring schools, um, so that the kids are, let's say, career or college-ready. Um, there was dual enrollment that you had mentioned, an AP and ACE courses. Do we even have those to offer in our school of Atlantic High? Is, are we a little weaker than some of the other schools that are attracting a much greater number of students and students that are really aspiring to go to college, because we just don't even have it available for them? I know we have IB, but I think that for those students who are not IB, I don't know that Atlantic is, uh, you know, an attractive school necessarily, because they may not have as many of those course, courses that kids are taking in order to be able to get into competitively, um, into college and universities. So that's something that I can't answer, maybe you can, or maybe the district can, but this just opens it up to maybe having a further conversation with the district. But, um, so that, that's one of the things, um, that I wanted to bring up. Um, and then the other was, um, I love the idea of the summer internship. I think that this is really going to ready some of the students. But I also, in our meeting last night, which I was impressed with, um, you know, that we are really moving forward at the Full Service Center, how much of that are you playing a role in as our, you know, coordinator for education? Did you take, um, any leadership? Or is this more of a school board to our school district to, um, community? Um, and the reason I ask that is because there was, I know that, I mean, I've seen it before, but it was very clear to me when I was looking at all the wants and the asks on the wish list. And I know that they're gonna be asking us, and we need to have that discussion as well for some of the things that they were wanting. Um, that there was really nobody there to kind of say, you know, that's over here, that's already being taken care of. We can't do, you know, another this or another that, meaning like Pompey has this, or, or, you know, 505 is doing that. Those, those types of things, in order for us not to duplicate services, because the resources are so limited. So I didn't know how much of a role, and that's what I was gonna ask you, um, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, and you're probably not even ready for this question, but I was gonna ask you, how much of a role have you played in what is happening there? And not that I think that the city should get completely involved, but it's always been successful when the city is involved, one-on-one, and it's not necessarily, I, I just don't know, I don't feel that happening there. It was a, to me, there were a lot of things that were gonna be put into that, uh, you know, technical center. And I'm just wondering, when you have too much going on, sometimes it becomes a failure, and I don't want to see that happen, not in our town. So can you answer those questions?
Sure. Um, well, there has been a series of community meetings around, um, Delray Full Service Center. In fact, I would believe that we kind of started that conversation with technical colleges back when we did that educational master plan in two thousand and seventeen. That's really where we kind of came up with that idea, and we did tour the, um, was it Sheraton?
Yep.
Technical High School and College, um, which kind of started, I guess, the synergy around that. And then there were a bunch of community meetings, and I did sit in on some, um, technical meetings with Dr. Robinson and the school district, but the actual layout of the building and programming moving forward, I had no leader, I, I had no real involvement in, in that, or building transfers, or not really involved in the whole picture of this, this, the school.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think that I don't, I know that that train is heading down the track. It was, it's obvious that we're gonna be, they're gonna be doing some demolition, and the, this is gonna be done next year, right? I mean, that's when they're planning on having this finish.
Opening in January.
Right, opening in.
January of twenty twenty-three.
Oh, yeah, not twenty twenty-two.
What I'd really like to do is try and get some more information, because it was kind of, um, vague of what the programs, enrollment, class courses and stuff like that, that I could present back to you. Um, I was hoping to actually work on an entire plan that I could have about thirty or forty-five days to collect all that data, so we can maybe look at it and come back sometime in early January, that we could talk about that specifically.
I think that's great, and I think in the meantime, it would be, if the commission agrees to have you start working on that, um, you know, updating that Sharing of Ex- for Excellence, um, plan, I, I think, in schools' plan, I think that that's really important. And then finally, I just wanted to say that I, I'm, I'm very, very concerned about the decline in these schools. I mean, when you're operating it, was it eighteen percent, you said, was that Village? What was the percentage?
Um, well, Village overall is, um, at sixty-four percent capacity or sixty-two, but if you break it down by elementary, middle and high school, I believe the high school is only at eighteen percent capacity. So it has a very small enrollment this year. And that was one thing that was a little bit lacking, uh, which I need to do a deeper dive into as well as what the investment would be to bring Village up to a technical high school. We'd heard about the adult education piece. We kind of heard what they're doing currently, but what is their plans to move that forward in the future?
Because that, that would only make sense if we're going to have a high school there. What we want to do is to do something that would actually attract more students to go to that high school. And if we don't have, um, if we don't have that kind of, uh, movement from one to the other, I, I think that we're just, we're, we're, we're failing there, you know, or flailing anyway, but we could be failing too, you know? And I, I think that that's really kind of an important issue. And again, how do you operate a school with only eighteen percent capacity in the, the funding part of it?
Right, I think we also have to look at the component with Carver and Pine Grove as well, playing into that with no, um, enrollment projection. And that Pine Grove is also needs to be looked at as part of that plan, because the district is, I think, twelve or fourteen million dollars to renovate that, which is coming up shortly, but they're just rebuilding a smaller school and not looking, I think our original plan talked about maybe dropping down and capturing some early childhood components, so we, we know our kids need to be kindergarten-ready. Um, so maybe there could be a public-private partnership to run that facility. I mean, the facility part is the expensive part. I think we could find partners, but we really haven't had an opportunity to do a deep dive or conversation with the district. Um, but I do feel there would be opportunities now to look at that as well. And then Carver, of course, will not be growing, because we have Plumosa School, the arts middle school, that will be taking up a lot of that growth. So there are a couple of things that we need to look at. And I did want to go back and answer your question about, uh, the piece with college readiness at Atlantic High School. They do have very strong programming pieces there. I think what the issue is there is that it stems back to that domino effect. When you look at our, the kindergarten readiness scores are very low. Then we move into elementary school that has low scores, that continues through, uh, middle and then high school. So when you get the two hundred and twenty-six kids that are not college and career-ready, I didn't have an opportunity to pull the numbers out, but there were, I want to say there's eight or nine hundred kids in the IB program, which aren't necessarily Delray Beach residents. So are those two hundred and twenty-six kids mostly our kids that live in our community? And if that's the case.
Might increase the.
Right, we really do need to look at that. So it's that whole domino, starting at that very early, um, age group, to get them to where they need to be, because that third grade is that big milestone of, uh, whether or not you're gonna be long-term successful academically.
Very good. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I wanted to make myself a little bit more clear. I thank you once again, Janet. This is difficult, it's really difficult. Um, I was not talking about the, um, older students and the interns. That would be an excellent way to prepare our students for the idea that, uh, maybe I want to go to college, maybe I don't want to go to college. There's just, there are just so many components. And I think, uh, childcare, starting at age three, is where we start making our errors. How much money do we need to invest in childcare, daycare, and the impact on the families and the schools? Because you can't start teaching a child at five years old how to say their alphabets. And they're already behind, if that's the case, and they're not gonna be, um, reading-ready at grade three. So I think the, the nation fails us. Also, I'd like to put in, and I thank you for reminding me, Mayor, charter schools have had a large, put a large dent in our educational system, and we don't even talk about it. A charter school can start up in June, I'm sorry, in September, and close the doors, doors in June. We've had our children outside the public school system for an entire year. These four prophets open up, close, open up, close. No one's addressing that. Our students are being bounced around and around, and we throw them back into our public schools and say, oh, you're behind, you're failing. So this isn't just a Delray Beach problem, and that's what I was trying to get at. Um, as you said, the money follows the students. When there's a, a charter school that opens or a private school, the money does not stay in the public school. It follows that child. We don't talk about it. The city's effort is tremendous, and I know you've been at it for a very long time, and I commend you, because I don't see how you do it, but I thank you for it. Um, reconnecting with the schools, we have retirees who would be more than willing to go into the schools and help out, but we're not establishing a program that would encourage that. Grandparents were invited to do, I don't even hear about that. Now, it's not all COVID, because a lot of the schools don't make it pleasant and welcoming. So maybe a little better connection with our principals. Uh, Mrs. Dixon, Mrs. Dixon rather, was very enthusiastic about the children at Village. How do we get the parents to make sure that their children are going to school? There used to be in my day in the old-fashioned time, that there was such a person, a person named Truant Officer. And if your child did not come to school, the parents were held responsible. I don't think that happens anymore. Um, so I encourage you, I would love to work with you to do more. Um, right now, my plate's a little full, but, uh, I can always add a little portion to it, if that's what's necessary. And I think it's gonna take more than our ninety-three thousand dollars. I don't know if there's money elsewhere that we can have other types of programs that we can expand, not just at the elementary schools. They're having trouble with the discipline in the schools. So I'm willing to do and help out and ask for money, whatever needs to be done. But I just think ninety-three thousand dollars is just a drop in the bucket.
It is.
Thank you.
Ms. Boylston, did you want to speak again?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to jump on a few of those things, especially, Mayor, that you mentioned. Um, I am very much open to a larger conversation with the school district, um, in regards to that broken system of, as the population dwindles, the funding dwindles, which, as the funding dwindles, the population continues to dwindle. It's a, it's a broken system, and I would love to have that conversation. And that's a separate conversation, because we should actually be pretty happy in regards. You mentioned that, the, the, the penny tax. We have three major projects, a few minor projects, but we have three major projects from the penny tax. One's complete.
Yep.
Uh, and that was a big one, which was the promised, uh, extension of Plumosa to a K-three-eight program. So that's a beautiful new building, if you haven't toured it yet, it's incredible. And that got pushed up a year, it actually got prioritized, so that was really exciting. Um, the second project is breaking ground right now, which is Full Service Center.
Well, yeah, and then we also have Pine Grove.
Which we talked about, and Pine Grove's right after it. So our three major projects have, have actually been prioritized, so I'm pretty happy with the penny tax dollars. The other funding topic, I very much would, uh, welcome that. And I, and I will say that, um, Janet, that you're being a little bit humble in regards to your, uh, um, your spark for Delray Full Service Center, because when I was on the education board with you, you're the one that put everyone, said that, we're all gonna get in the car, and we're gonna go to Broward, and we're gonna look at these, um, technical high, technical high school col- slash colleges, like Sheraton. Um, which then Dr. Deborah Robinson, a year later, she took a group down there and went to the same schools that we went to, and it was referenced last night as one of the models, um, for the Delray Full Service Center and what Village Center can eventually, eventually be. You were doing that, you know, you sparked that. Um, and, uh, and I've sat on her steering committee for Delray Full Service the last three years. And a lot of things that we've discussed by taking the, you know, the highest need jobs and then taking the highest paying jobs of the highest need jobs, HVAC, plumbing, electrical. Those were all conversations and data that you were bringing up, uh, years before. Um, so I, I, I really don't think you're, I think you're being very humble in regards to sparking a lot of those conversations, bringing Palm Beach State University to the, to the table, truly in-person to the table, um, to address how they're using their funding for adult education, which is a very long story. Mayor, you touched on it last night. Um, you physically brought them to the table to partner. Um, and, and I also mentioned that, right before COVID, you were putting programs together with the chamber to bring professionals into schools.
Yes.
And we sat down and did round tables, uh, at Carver, we bought all the, all the kids got pizza, and, and they got to sit with all the professionals as we tried to mentor them and get some of those professionals, right? Like, like Ms. Johnson mentioned, into the schools with the students, and then COVID hit, right? But that was a fantastic program you partnered with the chamber on. Um, and, and in regards to the, the charter schools, uh, Dr. Deborah Robinson actually talks a lot about charter schools. So if you watch some of the, the school, uh, district, school board meetings, she references it a lot in how they can be used for good, and when there's a niche, a need, such as a school for autism, right, that's a good, that's a good way where we can partner charter schools. And then some of the examples, Ms. Johnson, that, Vice Mayor Johnson, that you gave, that we have to be very weary of, right? And luckily, we haven't had that problem here in, uh, in Delray Beach. So, um, it's a, it's a very tough conversation, there's no easy solution. Um, but I'm excited to see some, some movement here and, and that you're attacking the need.
Yeah, I'm really hoping with the workforce program that we would start at that, um, high school level and then be able to afford to drop down to middle school.
Middle school.
Of course.
Because that's really where you have to spark and capture kids.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
So, um, about the plan, are we okay about asking, are you able to do that? And would you recommend it?
Yes. Yes, I definitely would, and I'd like to bring it back sometime early January, that we can maybe take a look at it and see. I can at least put a framework together for you, for your discussion, to move it forward.
Yes, and speaking about the meeting last night, I was a little discombobulated when some things were said, and it just disturbed me so much, but once I got in touch with, um, Dr. Robinson about it, she said, oops.
Oh, yes, uh, there was a mispo- there was misstatement, which basically was that the, um, the, uh, the cafeteria was going down when there was one, two, and twelve. Twelve is the cafeteria, that is actually remaining. So she, she did begin her conversation initially stating that.
Because she had once said, um,
Right.
we can't, you can't have the gym and the cafeteria. And last night, much to my amazement, there was the gym.
Right.
And I said, okay, and then she said, oh, no, building twelve is gone. So I'm a little confused as to where we stand with that, and I don't know if this conversation should go. All right, I understand. She told me first, thank goodness. And by the way, Commissioner, she really commended you, and I'd like to, don't know everything that you're doing with the school district, but thank you.
Oh, well, thank, thank you. I, I really enjoy working. I, I, I really enjoy working with Dr. Deborah Robinson.
Yeah, yeah, well, very good. Maybe you can tell us a lot more.
Remember you said I was persistent? Dr. Deborah Robinson.
I know, I know, I know her, I know her well. But, um, so, but whatever we've got going, we can't do anything. Again, I'm a big advocate for, everyone keeps saying the Delray Beach Full Service Center. There's a little niche in that Full Service Center, if we're going to keep calling it that. I'm not happy with that, but, uh, if we're all going to call it, uh, the Village Center, and the historic little piece that we're hoping to carve out.
Carver.
Is carving, yes, Carver High Historical. Don't know if, I was looking for the advocate for it. Uh, she said she'd try and be here, I don't know if she's here yet, but.
There she is.
Oh, there you are, I can't, this glass just stops me. Um, that put us back on track, I believe, but we cannot do anything with that, which is dear to my heart. I think we would have, may have to eat my words, we would have so much buy-in to the Village Center if we had that piece. Because the pride of having Carver High School in Delray Beach, I cannot even begin to tell those of you who are not a part of it, what it was. It was the center of the community. I don't see that Village has become that. Now, why, I do not know. And perhaps if we had the ability to have the Carver Historical Society there, it would spark, oh, well, here's the continuation of Carver in the Village Center. I think we don't have buy-in. We do not have buy-in for that school. And I don't know why. It's something worth, worthy of exploration, maybe when Janet puts her plan together again or revitalizes it, we can work on that. Because if nothing else, the parents are supposed to be the driving force. But maybe if we had community, that's not, that doesn't, the community, community that doesn't have a child, uh, attending the school, but if they're there, maybe for a gathering or something, well, what are they doing over there at the Full Service, um, uh, uh, Village? What are they doing? But, uh, I don't know that we really understand what they want to do, because they're talking about a practice field. So are they going to be a technical school? Or are they going to be an academic athletic-type school?
You raise, you raise exactly the point that I was, which is, we need to pull this all together and really have it understood as to where we're going, uh, with the school district, and what the school district's doing, and how we can partner or, you know, coordinate efforts so that we're not just haphazardly throwing things out there. And I, I'm going to rely on, um, Janet to direct us. Um, you, you can tell us what we need to do, or what you're seeing, and that would be great in a future follow-up report, you know, from you. Um, and, um, and also, uh, you know, maybe coordinating, um, some meetings so that we can all kind of find our way onto, onto a page together.
Okay.
All right.
Now that we can have meetings again.
Is there anything else? Anything that the city manager wants to add, or no?
No, simply looking forward to engaging, as noted. And quite frankly, this goes well with the series of meetings that Janet and I will accompany one another with leadership in the educational sector, including principals and other executives with the Palm Beach County School District. So with that, we appreciate the direction, and I think this was the intent, in which we hope to, to make accomplishments and enroll accordingly. But again, Mayor and City Commission, a number of meetings will now take place involving various educational leadership, and that will enable us to offer our expectations as we engage those discussions.
Sounds great. And Janet, do you have any questions for us, or anything that we didn't give you direction on, or anything that you would like to, um, you know, us to consider?
No, I think you gave me some clear direction.
Okay.
I just need to deep dive into some more data, but take a look at the.
I will.
Folder, because it has a lot of great information.
I saw that, I was already starting to peruse through it as you were talking, so thank you for that.
All right, thank you so much for giving me your time.
Thank you, and thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Great presentation. And now we are going to workshop item number two, which is a request for a sponsorship for a privately-initiated text amendment, so.
So Mayor?
Yes.
This is the first time we're having, um, one of these types of presentations. So, um, the applicant is present, um, he's going to be given ten minutes to present to the commission. As you know, we do not vote at workshops, so we simply need one member of the commission to, um, essentially sponsor the, um, the privately-initiated text amendment, and then he'll be able to submit an application to the city and, and commence the process.
Very good, thank you. So you're up, Mr. Max.
Hey, guys. Um, Ally Kaufman and I, from Delray Buggies. We are here to, oh, the presentation should be going up.
Can you just identify yourselves for the record?
State your name.
And speak right into that microphone, that's right there.
I'm Max Sengage, and this is Ally Kaufman. There we go. So Delray Buggies is an art and culture tour concept that we're trying to launch. Uh, we are requesting an LDR amendment. Uh, we need a commission sponsorship to proceed with that process. Prior to this new law, that wasn't necessary. We still are questioning this need, because it is irrelevant to land. Uh, but here we are today. Uh, next slide, please. So we are seeking the City Commission sponsorship of an LDR amendment application, so we can move forward with that application. There's an existing Segway tour, uh, ordinance, which is the closest thing related to this. We would simply be adding the vehicle type of a golf cart to the Segway tour. So it would be Segways and golf cars. Um, the Segways aren't even relevant anymore, but the, uh, regulations that exist for that are completely relevant. Uh, so it would just be a text amendment. Um, next slide.
So Delray Buggies is an offshoot of Windwood Buggies, um, which has been an incredibly successful public art golf cart tour. And we are partnering in a joint venture with Windwood Buggies to hopefully bring this opportunity to Delray. Our goal is to actually build upon the amazing work that Maruska did at the DDA to log all of the public art around our town, and, um, to bring that to life with guided tours. The cool thing about this is that twenty percent of all the revenue will go back into the community to provide creative arts programming for students and families in Delray through the Community Classroom Project. Uh, the buggies will leave and launch from the campus at Space of Mind across the street, and, um, and we'll have a few different guided tours to highlight the different areas of the town and the different artwork. And the goal would be that people would come and take the tour more than once, um, because they'll each go to different parts of the city. So, can we go to the next slide? So these are the five main types of tours. Um, obviously, we want to do, we're promoting art appreciation and the different types of public art that we have, the different neighborhoods that, that are housing this public art. Um, and we will have different types of experiences. Um, scavenger hunts are a really fun way to provide a group experience, a happy hour tour, where we're partnering with some of the local restaurants as stops on the tour. And then obviously, we can create a private tour for anybody based on their needs. The goal would be that these would be sixty to ninety-minute, uh, guided tours, um, throughout the town. Next slide. So we'll be partnering with Community Classroom Project and the DDA to, um, make sure that we're highlighting all of the art and artists, and providing the scholarships back into the town for creative arts programming.
It's community-based, so the money will be recirculating directly to the youth in the southwest and northwest neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And, um, it's, it's amazing, because it will be sustainable, self-sustainable.
Well, our concern is the cost of this LDR change is going to exceed the projected revenue for this type of business. This isn't really a money-making venture, as much as it's a vehicle to promote Delray's public art and to raise some funds for scholarships for kids to come and create, and create art and participate in creative arts with their families. So we're also here to see if there's any guidance you can provide on if this is really the necessary route for us to go, um, or if there's a way that we could launch sooner with less of an overhead so that we could take advantage of the holiday season as well. We're ready to go, with the exception of the city approval. And then you can see in the next slide, the, um, this is the map that would encompass, uh, the different areas that will be tours. Again, we're really highlighting the public art that's already been catalogued by the DDA and the art that keeps going up. There's some amazing art that's just gone up in the last few weeks as well.
Next slide. Here's a couple of the major, uh, mural stops that will be part of each tour. So this way, we'll be hitting all the areas of downtown, as well as a little bit of outside downtown, but we'll be staying inside the CBD district. We'll be making sure to not necessarily stop at each sponsoring business, but tie in a, a pass-through, or, uh, you know, public art is mural, but it's also sculptors.
Yeah.
So we'll be passing through there, it's an arts and culture tour. So we'll be giving guided tours by locals, to locals, and tourists and visitors.
And it's worth mentioning, as you probably already know, that we've got some really strong international art in the city of Delray, and, um, and that's something that people will travel here for.
As Vice Chair of Public Art Board, we just approved a mural last month that was a Delray local, who went Windwood famous and then international famous, and he just finished a mural in Artist Alley. And it's pretty remarkable that he is returning to Delray to.
Excuse me, would you come up to the microphone, please? We're sorry.
Sorry about that. Um, what did you hear? What did you not hear? Um, good question to ask someone. Uh, I'm the Vice Chair of Public Art Board. Last month, we approved a mural by a local Delray guy, uh, Hawks. He went Windwood famous, international famous. He returned to Delray to, uh, spread the love and, uh, um.
Art.
Art. In Artist Alley, which is now, uh, a massive mural that is very attractive to the arts, uh, alley. Um, it is working on revitalizing that neighborhood and really bringing attention to that by, by a local.
So we're not sure if we're on the right track with this, if this is the path that we need to keep going down. And we would love some guidance and hopefully your support.
Thank you.
Yep.
I want to start?
Um, yeah, but just like a little background on this direction, this option. Is this, is this the best approach? I'm assuming it is, because that's why we're here.
Right, it's, it's the only approach, because it's not, um, a permitted use in the code. So it does require a code change. So there's a couple of things going on here that I just want to clarify for the record. The first step is the text amendment. So they will not be able to operate until that text amendment goes through the channels, goes through the various boards, and ultimately comes before this commission for approval. And so, um, the next step would be, because I believe that the code, um, in that, in the section, the Segway tours, I, it, there is a conditional use. So then the conditional use application would have to be submitted, reviewed, and processed through the various boards before it comes to you for approval. So there's a couple of steps that need to be taken before we get to that point. Really, the only thing that's before you today, because you're not approving a business today, you don't have that purview yet. Really, the only thing that you are considering is whether or not you want to sponsor a change to four, three, four, um, quadruple Z, which is Segway tours and Segway sales, to include golf cart tours. What you always have to remember is when you change the code, you're not approving one business. You're opening it up to full competition and other businesses in the city. So while that's a few steps away for you, I do think that that's something that needs to be for your consideration when you're, when you're looking at this. Um, so preliminarily, if you are inclined to sponsor it, we can take that route. And then you can also provide direction, so that when the applicant brings forth their text amendment, they can have a little bit of insight from the commission as to, you know, any areas that you think should be off limits, if there are going to be boundaries to this, like, things like that, if you think those are relevant to your consideration, and ultimately, considering a text amendment, you may want to give them a little bit of direction as to, um, where, what you would be comfortable with if it came before you. Obviously, there's no promises, so, you know, even though they do obtain a sponsorship today, that's not in any way an indication that even if they brought a text amendment, that they would receive an approval, but it's just the first step, the first hurdle. As to the, um, the waiver request, um, I believe the code does have waiver requests for nonprofits. I don't know how they would be submitting this application. Um, I don't think that's something for your consideration. I think that's an operational administrative decision, and so I wanted to put that on the record as well.
I, you know, on, uh, just piggybacking on what, uh, Commissioner Boston just was alluding to, being open to all others. What, do you foresee any, um, issue, I mean, like, we're opening up, maybe a, it's a little bit of a Pandora's box, so I just kind of want to understand, what does that mean? What, what is it that we would be looking at potentially if we decide to change this? And being that it's conditional use, is it going to be conditional use for anybody that's coming in to do something like this? So if something gets, you know, like, for instance, I, I know they were talking about a happy hour tour or a scavenger hunt, and I mean, it sounds great, but I can almost see scavenger hunt, because I, I think of it being, getting to the next spot as quickly as possible to be, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. Just a second.
This is for discussion, so you have to just.
So I, I just wanted to, I'm not saying that that's how it would work, and I, and I, I appreciate that, but what I want to do is, there are potential others that could be coming in to do something that wouldn't necessarily be within what we would want to see. So I'm asking you, are we opening up that Pandora's box, and what does that look like?
What it's gonna, so I don't know what the text amendment's going to look like. Based on what they're saying, they would like to add golf cart tours into our code.
Right.
And so what that does is, if they keep it as is with the conditional use, then anybody who's interested in also, uh, performing that service would be eligible to submit an application to the city and have it come before you as a conditional use. So it would come before you, it's not an automatic use that you would allow. But in, you know, and as a conditional use, you would mitigate the impacts, you would, you could basically design what you're comfortable with seeing, but it does open up the doors. Um, for example, um, the gentleman with the petty cabs. You know, he may come forward to you, and he may want to, you know, pursue a text amendment and add petty cabs to this, to this, um, section of the code. So I just want to be clear that while they have, um, an exciting business opportunity, the text amendment would allow others to, to bring that before you as well.
Okay, very good. Continuing conversation.
I think it's.
Sorry for interrupting, uh, Commissioner Boston.
Oh, that's okay.
Sorry.
The, um, so the Segway tours, I, I remember that when I, I think it was brought to commission. There were some things put in place, one for safety, but also restrictions on advertisement as well, correct?
So it, there, you know, it says, no more than nine tours shall be conducted each day. Um, servicing of the Segways is included in there. No Segways, sales, or tours shall be located within three hundred feet, so there's, um, location requirements. Um, tour guides can't amplify their voice or music while operating their tours. Um, pre-tour instructions shall not be conducted on the public street sidewalks, and they have to be in compliance with Chapter 132 of the Delray Beach Code of Ordinances. So this already has certain requirements that, again, I don't know what the text amendment's going to look like, so they may ask to change some of those. And again, that would be up for your consideration and ultimate decision, but there are certain things that are already in the code that, um, could presumably stay.
So I remember, I think I was on the DDA when that was brought up, and I had, I had concerns. Um, but I think the commission at the time had my concerns and more, and they put a lot of those things in place. Um, so I would, just so you know, I would be looking, one, to have all of those things in place, and probably a few others. Um, and, um, but I would be happy to sponsor your, uh, your LDR, um, amendment, text amendment.
Thank you.
And our city proposal did include, uh, individual adjustments to the Segway tour, uh, letters. So we were already cleared with that.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I'm just very concerned about opening up, um, this type of an industry. Uh, Patrick, I think his name, is Patrick, has been after us for years to have his business be a part of the city of Delray Beach. And we said, no, no, no. And I believe that going this route, how wonderful it might sound, is just going to add another layer to the city's traffic, and I just, I would not be interested. Thank you.
I just, I just want to, just remember back, though, same concerns about the, um, Segway tours, and we don't even have any. There was, there was concerns that. There was concerns that they'd be popping up everywhere and we don't even have the one originally that wanted to be here, so. That's why I was just throw that out there, it can go either way.
And a comment on that, we'll be running ours very well that there won't be, other people will not be.
We're talking about one golf cart.
Our operation will be so.
All right, we can limit the amount of golf courses like Segways were limited. We can limit how close they can be together as far as their location, so therefore there's only so many that could even possibly be in place in the downtown. I mean, with all those types of restrictions, definitely the advertising restriction, that's why I'm comfortable with sponsoring this. But I do want to be upfront, that will be, I will be just as strict, if not more strict than what was put on the Segway operator when this originally was adopted.
Good, anything else, Vice Mayor? Okay, so Commissioner.
I was on the commission in 2011 and I don't remember exactly how I voted, but I didn't like the Segways. I just don't like this kind of thing. I appreciate both of you and I know what great services you do for the city and you're volunteering and please don't take my comments how you're probably going to take them. But to me, as someone who's very familiar with Wynwood, Wynwood has 50 times the amount of street art we do.
Yeah, but I would disagree. I think we actually have a ton of art here and Delray is an art destination. And so I think the DDA has done a great job of indexing that. If you look at their art trail, it's a huge list.
It's about the ratio.
Yeah, I just, I see it differently as someone who has lived downtown, worked downtowns for many years.
Yeah.
And just very familiar because I love going to Wynwood, you know, we don't have the Wynwood walls. We don't have many of the.
We do.
We don't.
We have great art in this town.
Wynwood.
So the way that it works here is that this is the comment section, you had your time and it's our time. And so as Commissioner, as Deputy Vice Mayor speaks, he's giving you his opinion.
Understood.
And I think that it's important, really important, especially if you're going to go down a path to create something to hear each. Because I think that that should help to make, help you make your mind up. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And it's just going to be difficult for me to support, just knowing everything with the proposal, which I really respect. I just, some of the other things that could come up as illustrated by our city attorney, those are my major concerns if we go forward. So we'll see what happens if it comes forward, but it's going to be a tough one for me. Thank you.
All right, and I, you know, listen, I support moving forward on this as the, as Commissioner Boylston did. I do have some hesitations as to what this is going to end up looking like. But I'm willing to, you know, give it, give it an opportunity of finding its way to some of the boards and getting some of the input. And I'm with Commissioner Boylston if we end up having the support moving forward. And it looks like you're about 50/50 here in the support moving forward, that there is going to be some rules and it will be something that will be, and that's not necessarily because of your organization and what you guys are doing. It's that as we open this up, it's the unknown. Everything that we do here has a ripple effect and sometimes you do not know what kind of a ripple you're going to create. And so it's, it's one of those situations where you want to make sure that you're not doing something that creates something else that we, you know, can't change and can't stop and learn to regret. And so that's, that's the concern that I have. And that's the reason why I posed a question to our esteemed city attorney to really try to understand how is this going to impact not your organization, not your group, but anything else that's coming behind. Because when we do a text amendment, it's not just you we're looking at, we're looking at opening up a different, a whole different, you know, box that can come down on the city. So anyway, you have your support moving forward and so I don't know if there's anything else anybody wants to say, but good luck and
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll see you before, before us again. Thank you so much. All right, anything else? Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Everyone have a great afternoon.